According to the clock, it's six o'clock. So I hereby call the Tuesday, April 2nd, City Commission meeting to order. Could we please call the roll?
Mayor Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Present.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, we have three proclamations. First proclamation is the Accord Hospice of Manhattan. And I think we have three individuals here that are going to come forward. We've got Bobby Cram and Amy and Nick, right?
Correct.
Okay, excellent. All right. Whereas Accord Hospice of Manhattan, established in 2014 in Manhattan, Kansas, has served the patients and their families in Manhattan and surrounding Flint Hills communities faithfully and with exceptional care for ten years. And Accord Hospice of Manhattan provides grief and loss services in the form of one-on-one counseling, support groups, educational presentations, and remembrance services to anyone in the community who has suffered a loss. And Accord Hospice of Manhattan understands the lifelong impact a loss can have on a child and therefore provides an annual one-day grief camp called Camp SOAR SOAR to support children who are dealing with a significant loss through death, divorce, distance, or incarceration. And Accord Hospice of Manhattan provides education on hospice, advanced care planning, bereavement, and other end-of-life care topics in the form of one-on-one meetings, community presentations, theatrical support plays, panel discussion, and others to help dispel the myths of hospice. And Accord Hospice of Manhattan works collaboratively and in partnership with local community businesses and organizations to present a unified effort to support our community on issues relating to life-limiting illness. Therefore, I, Win Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 11th, 2024, the 10th anniversary of Accord Hospice of Manhattan, and call upon all citizens of Manhattan to recognize and celebrate Accord Hospice for the significant impact made in our community with over 1,000 patients and families served, more than 450 children served through grief outreach, and more than 1,250 days of charity hospice care provided.
So just real quick, on April 11th, we're really excited to announce that we're going to have a little event at Liquid Arts to honor our partners in the community because without all of them supporting us, we couldn't be who we are today. The other thing is June 1st, Camp SOAR, we're going to have at A&amp;H Farm for our kids that have lost someone through death and distance. So we're really excited to do that and collaborate with Manhattan community on helping them through their grieving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I think we have four individuals that are going to... Oh, just three of you made it tonight. Okay. Come on up. Okay. Whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month will be recognized throughout the United States during April 2024, and children are our nation's most vulnerable members as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Manhattan. And childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the U.S., and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, business, law enforcement agencies, and families. And children who live in families with access to concrete, economic, and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. We acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling, sharing, and center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, now therefore I, Win Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Manhattan and call upon all citizens to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for this wonderful proclamation. We're from Sunflower Children's Collective, also known as Sunflower CASA, Stepping Stones Child Advocacy Center, and Sunflower Bridge Child Exchange and Visitation Center. We are thick here tonight in this room. We have a bunch of board members and staff here tonight, and it is definitely something that is all about our community coming together to work for child abuse prevention. It's not one agency or one person. It's everyone together. So thank you very much. Don't forget, Grow Green's coming up, and like most nonprofits, we are always in need of funding. So thank you very much. And we'll be passing out these beautiful little pinwheel cookies. So please notice the pinwheel gardens all over Manhattan during the month of April. The pinwheel is the national emblem for child abuse prevention. Thank you.
Okay. The last proclamation is Fair Housing Month. So we've got, it looks like, one, two, three, four, five of you? Stephanie is going to join us, too. Excellent. Okay, so whereas April 24 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And equal opportunity for all is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and equal access to housing is an important component of this goal. Whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability and impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, and cultural benefits we enjoy, and the laws of the nation, our state, and the City of Manhattan seek to ensure equal quality of choice for all transactions involving housing. And ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Kansans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore I, Win Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April 24 as Fair Housing Month in order... in support of our continued commitment to doing what we can to house all of our workforce and keep vibrancy in our town.
On behalf of the Flint Hills Association of Realtors, I just want to say that each April, we really take the time to commemorate and celebrate the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And we do a lot of celebrations and different educational opportunities for our membership throughout the month of April. And we thank the Commission and the city for having this as a high priority, to have fair housing for all.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Public Comments. And Public Comments are, for those items that are not on the consent agenda or general agenda tonight, each person is limited to one speaking opportunity of up to five minutes. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to make public comment? I think, Gary, you signed up. Only name on the list.
And it's becoming a habit, right? The only name on the list. My name is Gary Olz. I live at 3308 Frontier Circle here in Manhattan. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, staff. I did, may have made one mistake on that when I wrote that down. Do we also get an opportunity to comment what's on the general agenda? Or is this it?
Yeah, there's public comment on the general agenda and consent agenda.
I didn't write that down when Brenda asked me. I thought, oh, should I have written that down? I'm here to speak briefly on two subjects. I think the most popular one, well, they both start with the letter B. The most popular one this time of year is baseball. Because everybody loves baseball, right? Don't really have any depth wisdom on that one, other than play ball. But the other B is budgets. And I just want to remind the public and remind everyone who's here that the budgets don't start in two or three months. They're starting now for 2025. I would challenge and encourage and pray and plead with this Commission and with the staff. Not so much Ron, because you're going to be out of here. Once again, congratulations on all your years of service to the city and, more importantly, to the citizens of Manhattan. But as budget time approaches and the staff is putting together their numbers, I'm sure you're posted on that periodically, so you know where it's going. And I know that we, as taxpayers, would love to see R and R reached. Not necessarily a reality. So as I was telling a Commissioner earlier, long ago, about 30-plus years ago when I moved to Manhattan, I had a lot of anxiety on the growth of government, which seemed to be exponential at that time, at least in my mind. It probably really wasn't. It just seemed like it. But I finally came to the conclusion that government's going to grow. That's just the reality of life and living. Certainly, businesses want to grow. That's the reality or the goal. Government's going to grow. So I finally came to the conclusion and found peace and rest in the fact that it's a game of percentages. How much is it going to grow? Will it grow 5%? Will it grow 3%? For many, many years, Manhattan has been very blessed with assessed value or appraised value growth, and that's really helped with regards to the value of your home, even though you're not selling it at that point. So I just want to remind everybody that budgets are starting to form. And if you've got a particular area of interest in watching where those budgets are forming, I'm sure the data is available if you ask for it. At least, and you can always go to the website for the city and see past years' budgets and how they're doing. And I believe the current 2024 budget is quarterly posted or whatever, whenever it is posted, so you can know what the spending looks like. And in conjunction with that, as I wrap up my time, is my biggest... my equally big concern when I talk about budgets is RCPD. If you live in Manhattan, you get to contribute 100% of your taxes, that portion of your taxes, to RCPD. If you live in the county, you get to contribute about 20, if my numbers are correct. So with that contribution, I would encourage everyone to pay attention to the $2 million last year or two years ago, the $2 million this current budget year, probably the $2 million in 2025 they're going to request. And maybe that's reasonable, maybe that's not. But we leave it to the elected officials and the RCPD Law Board-appointed officials and elected officials to hash that out. So appreciate your service. And I guess the only thing I could say is, at least, I'll be watching.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Is there anyone else that wishes to make public comment on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to Commissioner comments. John?
Yeah, I went to the MPO Policy Board meeting a couple weeks ago. They're going to be, along with the East Manhattan Gateway Study, which is mostly a land use study, they're going to be also conducting a transportation study at the same time. So it'll be very complimentary to that work that is being done. And really looking forward to finding out what they... or seeing what they find out. They're going to include some estimates for alternative routes out east of Manhattan. So they've got some options that they're going to look at. And yeah, I think it'll be good to have some updated data and keep you all posted.
Okay, I just want to mention one thing. Grow Green Match Day, 22 April. So there's over, I think, 90 agencies listed there. So feel free to dig out your wallet and donate on that day because it's going to be very helpful to everyone. Okay, on that note, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission and may be approved in one motion. A Commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda. And we will have a public comment on it, again, limited to five minutes. So first, we'll begin Commissioners' comments on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I just have a quick question about the brick restoration. So that's just so that we ensure that we have enough bricks to finish the project, right? Because there are already some existing, but there's going to be some that are...
That's correct. You know, one block is fully bricked. How much suitable brick is under the asphalt in the next block? I think is some of the... a lot of the question, how stable it might be for reuse. So estimated quantities that we'll need... this is additional brick we'll need for the project, and we'll just supply it to the low bidder.
Okay. And like, if we don't end up using it, is what happens?
Yeah, it can be used to repair other brick streets and the like.
Okay.
And this is all part of a... I think we had a grant in 2022 to rebuild the street along there, and it was an 80/20 thing. So I think KDOT picked up a lot of it. So it's a... it's a good project.
I noticed that the crosswalk in front of the Waram has some bricks that are missing, so that might be a place to put some of these.
Okay, there's no further Commissioner comments. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment on the consent agenda, and we can take a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Adamcheck?
I approve.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, then we can move on to the general agenda. The first item on the general agenda is rezoning a Riley County-owned tract for a new Riley County Emergency Medical Services Facility to be located at 1115 Charles Little Road.
Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. Our first rezoning item for you this evening, as the mayor just mentioned, is for the Riley County EMS facility. They're seeking to rezone from RH, which is a high-density residential with a university overlay, to PI, Public Institutional Two. The general location, as you see here, is immediately south of Claflin. To the east is Kansas State University. And our... this shows our current zoning map. As I mentioned, it's currently zoned RH. What is not shown on this map is the university overlay. That university overlay is not needed with the PI Two District, so that would be not included as part of the rezoning. The building that you see right... right here, that's LaFine. It does have that university overlay, which is how it's allowed to be in that RH District. But for the most part, this area is surrounded by residential. Our future land use map does indicate that this would be or continue to be used as public or semi-public land use, and so it would be consistent with our future land use map. I wanted to speak... well, before I move on to speak a little bit more about the Public Institutional District, which is, this is going to be the first zoning district in the city that has this zoning designation. This went to the Planning Board a couple of weeks ago. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Board or recommended for approval by that board. And there were no public comments or board comments with this item. So I wanted to distinguish a little bit between PI One and PI Two. PI One is generally going to be used for parks, open space, recreational facilities, and cemeteries, and then any other municipal, county, or USD use that is outside of those uses I just mentioned, we would designate as PI Two. This would include any K through 12 school that the school district has, along with any of their buildings or facilities that support the school district's mission. So it is limited to the county, the city, and the school district. And anything, again, anything that's outside of parks, open space, recreational facilities, we would recommend be in that PI Two District. One of the reasons that we created the PI District within the MDC was we found ourselves doing municipal facility reviews for something, for example, on the county site, they have a digital sign somewhere up here along Claflin. We had to go through municipal facilities review a couple... I think it was last year, because digital signs weren't allowed in residential district. So that PI use really just tailors itself better to those taxing entities, their needs, and their facilities, whereas the residential district doesn't... a lot of times, it's not really made to have those uses in it. So that is one of the reasons why it was created, and the county is the first entity to seek this opportunity to rezone to the PI Two District. With that, I would open it up for any questions you have, either on this particular proposal or on the PI District.
So like, what restrictions would the county have with this zoning? They said they wouldn't have to go through anything for a sign, but like, would they have any other kind of restrictions?
Part of it would be with any platting that would need to happen. But as far as what we're talking about this evening, as far as the use, they have a little bit more flexibility on signage. There are some differences within the... within coverage. I can go... I can get back to you and look specifically at how that would vary from what the RH is.
Okay.
But it really is just to accommodate those institutional uses that weren't ever... we wouldn't allow, say, a business to be located in the RH District and have some of those signage or have some of the parking like we see here. But we recognize that city, county facilities, and school districts, they are a little bit of a unique use within the residential areas.
But like, if the county wanted to build, say, some kind of hazardous material storage facility in there, would they have to rezone that? Or are they able to just do that?
It would be allowed under the zoning district. So just like our wastewater treatment plant, we could rezone it to be... it would be PI Two. But I would imagine the reason that it's restricted to the taxing entities is because we hold them to a higher standard of would they go in and... you know, would we, as a city, go in and locate our wastewater treatment plant here in the middle of residential areas? The answer would be no. So part of that is just that consideration. Every decision we make has to be in an open forum, as does the school district and the county. So I imagine that if the county proposed a hazardous waste facility here, there would be ample opportunity for people to show up and advocate against that.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, any other Commissioners wish to comment on?
Stephanie, do we know who Charles Little was?
I do not know that question. Do you know?
No.
Okay.
Good item for the Historic Society to research for you. Okay, seeing no other Commissioner comments, is there any public comment on this item? No public comment, then we'll close... there is one. Feel free.
How does that... if I heard it correctly, it was school district, city, and county. What about federal government or the state government? If they wanted to step in and build something?
Go ahead and answer that, Stephanie.
This is... the PI District is only limited to city, county, school district. If it's a state facility, a federal facility, any other government agency or nonprofit, they would have to fit within one of our other existing zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I guess we can entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning a 13.5-acre tract of land generally located southeast of the intersection of Claflin Road and Wharton Manor Road from RH, High Density Residential District with OUF, University Fringe Overlay, to PI Two, Public Institutional District, based on findings in the staff report and recommendation by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I have a late breaking news. Susan was kind enough to Google Mr. Little, and it appears that he was one of the oldest living members of the medical profession in Kansas. He moved to Manhattan a half-century ago. Fully a half-century ago that he came to Manhattan, and he was one of the men who gained their training and attended their first cases prior to the Civil War. So he probably was somebody who sawed off a lot of... anyway, we're happy that he's... he was here. Thank you, Susan.
Excellent. Our next item on the agenda, we're going to consider rezoning a city-owned tract at 2010 Tecumseh Road, which is adjacent to the new Riley County Emergency Medical Services Facility.
Okay, we are in the same vicinity here with the city's pump station. Again, rezoning from that RH, University Fringe Overlay District, to PI Two. Here is our... the city's triangle here, immediately south of the parcel you just took action on. And again, our current zoning map has this as RH with University Fringe Overlay, and it shows... our future land use map shows that continuing to be some sort of public, semi-public use. This went to the Planning Board the same night as the other item we just took action on. Also was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Board. There were no public comments or comments from the board on that item. Any questions on this one?
Commissioners, feel free. Okay, I don't have any questions. We'll open it for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we can entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning a .2-acre tract of land at 2010 Tecumseh Road, located northwest of the intersection of Tecumseh Road and Charles Little Road from RH, High Density Residential District with OUF, University Fringe Overlay, to PI Two, Public Institutional District, based on the findings of the staff report and recommendations by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Amcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we move on to Item C, which is actually three different things. Consider requests for sales tax exemption and city incentives by waiving various permit and connection fees for the following three low-income housing tax credit projects.
I don't have a presentation for this one. I was going to reference the memo that was included in your packet and then walk through a couple of other notes to make there. So what you have in front of you are three requests for low-income housing tax credits. This process is managed by the state, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, or KHRC. And KHRC has changed their process this year with their LI-Tec... And KHRC has changed their process this year with their LI-Tech program. They have what they call a QAP, a Qualified Allocation Plan, and that document sets up how they're going to score all of the LI-Tech applications. Part of that process, there are some basic requirements that they require of the developer, but then they also have a scoring system that they use. The more points that a project receives, the better off it does competitively at the state level. So this year, we have quite a bit of interest from three developers. Originally, there were four. One of them decided to withdraw their application just because of how competitive it is for Manhattan. There is, what I've heard from the development community that does LI-Tech quite often is that it's very unlikely for the city of Manhattan to receive all three of these. And two of the projects, and I may, is Aaron still here? Yeah, okay. So I believe that Hunter Drive and both Sunflower Flats are opportunity sites, are unique opportunities? Is that right? Okay, you did not. Okay, so Sunflower Flats is then our only unique opportunity. What my understanding is, we would only get one of those unique opportunity projects within, or each jurisdiction would. Some of this, I feel that KHRC is still kind of feeling their way through these different projects and these different monies that they're managing, so it seems each year we learn a little bit more about what their expectation, they being KHRC's expectations are. So I outlined in our, in the agenda item summaries, that for the requests that you have before you, the projects receive more points the more that the city is willing to contribute in fee waivers. For the Cypress Ridge project, which has the least amount of units, they would receive 20,000, or if the city were to waive 20,000 in fees, they would receive five points. If it was 40,000 in fee waivers, they would receive 10 points. And then for the other two projects here, they would receive five points if there were $40,000 in fee waivers, or 10 points if there were $80,000 in fee waivers. Additionally, they, the developers get points if they have a sales tax exemption through the IRB process. Let's see, what else? One item to note is KHRC does have some basic criteria, one of which is that there is proper zoning, and that two of the sites, so Cypress Ridge and Sunflower Flats, they, the zoning currently on those properties, it would allow for the proposed project. The Hunter Drive project is within a PUD, so that PUD would need to be amended to accommodate the current proposal. I would just note that IRBs and that sales tax exemption, it does not have a direct fiscal impact on the city. So those multimillion dollar numbers that you see here in this column, that is not a direct cash infusion by the city. I guess the only, the only impact that it could have on the city is if they were to be buying their materials within, from someone within city limits. That may or may not occur, it's hard to say at this point, but that would be just, we wouldn't be able to collect the sales tax on that if they were to purchase those materials here. Let me see, if there's anything else that I wanted to... Oh, I did, oh, sorry. Guess we're, oh, it's National Hippo Day maybe, or something here in this tool. I did want to bring up, I did some quick calculations. Commissioner Opel, you brought this up last time. In the, in the table, I did incentives per unit, however, that was based on that sales tax exemption, so I feel like that's a little misleading. I did the calculation for just the city requested waivers per unit. For Cypress Ridge, it's about $5,200 a unit. For Hunter Drive apartments, it would be about $1,800. And for Sunflower Flats, it would be about $1,300 per unit. That, again, is just considering, considering the city's total waivers. With that, I will pause and see if there's any questions, or if there's anything you would like me to expand on that was either in the packet or additional questions you might have.
How is the sales tax exemption calculated?
That is a, we ask the developer for their total project cost, and that is not actually the sales tax exemption, that reflects their total project cost.
Okay.
I would, I know that Jason has a quick kind of in-the-head calculation that he does to figure out what that sales tax component could be, but that isn't actually reflected in the resolution that bond council puts together.
Right, okay.
Typically, we see about half go towards goods that could have a sales tax impact. The other half is typically labor in a total project. It's a rough estimate, but that 16, or 17.6, divide that basically in two, take it times .915, .0915, 9.15 percent. You roughly get about $800,000.
Yeah, I was just, there's a wide range of costs in these, and, yeah, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, can you address the pretty wide disparity in terms of system development charges for Cypress Ridge?
Sure.
Is that because of its location and?
It actually, the system development charges is based on how many meters and the sizes of the water and sewer meters that are being used. The, our Public Works Department likes to see one meter per building, so there are 15 buildings of this project, which means they need 15 meters, both water and then the matching sewer meter, and that's why that system development charge is higher for that building. For Hunter Drive and for Sunflower Flats, each of those projects only had two or three meters, even though they're larger in diameter, they don't require as many because it's a, an apartment building. I would note that I believe that we have representation from all three applicants this evening, if you have any questions for them specifically on their project. And I, you do have a presentation from the Hunter Drive developer. He has put together, I think it's up here, he's put together something that at some point he would like to provide to the commission.
Okay, I want to just comment on a couple of things before we get into that. When we look at these incentives, now my understanding is that on the system development charges, which affects the Water Department, that you can't waive that, you have to have an alternate source. And I think the staff thing proposed that that be the workforce housing money to go into that. Now, I've got some concern with that because I thought we agreed that workforce housing money was going to be devoted to only those projects that fit the 60 to 100% AMI. And when you look at these projects, I did some analysis on it, the Sunflower Flats project doesn't fit the definition at all. The Cypress Ridge project, it has 21 of the 30 units in that range, so in my mind, it's only 70% eligible for workforce funds, not the full amount. And Hunter Drive, according to their application, 25% of the units were moderate income and 75% were low income. So if I'm looking at the calculations for, you know, the workforce housing money, if we're going to stick to our definition, then, you know, that should have been clear to the applicants that, you know, you can't apply for the full amount, at least not under workforce housing. Now, there are other ways to approach this. I mean, if the commission wants to fund all this, I think we would have to go to another alternate source, and that would be our, you know, what we commonly refer to as the economic development sales tax, and that would be taking money out of the jobs portion. Now, it is true, you know, you could waive the building permit fee. I'm not a fan of that because we got the budget coming up, and if we, you know, waive $100,000 or so, you know, out of that, that's just something that's going to have to get picked up on the mill levy or something else. So I'm not a, I'm not a real fan of that. So I think, you know, we have to decide, you know, first, what is our definition of workforce? Are we going to go with what we talked about at the retreat or not?
Well, I'd say I'd actually brought this up at our last meeting, that we would have this, that we'd have to talk to about. And I know some commissioners said everybody works, so it's, and we need housing in every category. I really want to see us progressive housing in one way, shape, form, or another, and we don't seem to be making much progress. So I'd really like to see these get through and get this funding so we can get all the points on these projects. I'd be willing to use the workforce housing and consider it under that, or I'm willing to look at other sources of funds. But I want to, I really want to see us make some progress in housing, and frankly, we just haven't been doing it, so I'd like to see these get through.
When, the charges for the building permit, it seems to me that those are not deficits, they're just dollars we wouldn't ever be collecting. I mean, they're not going to take off from our total, obviously, we have staffed time and that kind of thing, but it's not as if the budget will be less $100,000 because of those. It's, we're simply not, that money is just going to be a wash.
Well, you're still going to have staff that's going to have to work on it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the other problem I've got is like Jason has told us repeatedly, you know, we've got this personnel costs, and they increase every year, and so if you reduce your revenue, then that's a problem. So it will have an impact because the costs go up every year through inflation, and reducing the revenues is not a good idea. I mean, we've been discussing possibly raising the sales tax, and so I think, you know, we really got to consider, you know, and we could make that up, as I said, you can use the jobs money. I mean, that's the sales tax that's already out there. We set aside, I think, eight million for the Scorpion project, and it won't be using eight million if it does come to fruition. So I think the, I think the funds are there, like I did a, like John's talking about, I've got a piece of paper I can share with you, but if you were to do this, we'd end up with 162,000 coming out of workforce and the rest coming out of the jobs portion of the ECO Devo tax, which, again, isn't going to hurt the mill levy or any of the budget planning. The, the jobs portion would be 149,664, and the workforce would be 162,594. And that would fully fund, you know, all three projects using those sources.
So as far as the staff goes, they're working, whether they have to file these permits or not, they're expected to be at work 40 hours a week. So I kind of disagree with you there that, you know, they've got to get paid to file these building permit fees and stuff because they're going to be working regardless. And I do agree with Karen that it's just kind of an opportunity cost where, yeah, we could realize this income if we don't waive the building permit fees, but also, like, it doesn't really cost us anything out of, you know, any fund to waive those fees. And as far as the workforce, I think that, you know, with like the SECO project, we have been very diligent at staying with the scope of the sales tax question, and the sales tax question specifically said workforce housing. And we have a definition set by HUD for workforce housing, and I really think we should do our best to stick to that for that workforce housing money because it was defined in the sales tax question, and we should really do our best to stick to that.
One thing I just want to also just point out in total is that we're only obligated for these monies if these projects go through. And the odds of all three of them going through are very slim. I mean, I hope they all go through, but realistically, if we get one, two, great type of things, when we look at the total amount of money, I'd almost like to have that problem that they all get through, but, you know, just something to keep in mind.
A point of clarification on the building permit fee versus the system development charges. Your building permit fee, I believe you can waive. Katie can clarify that for me. But the system development charges are really back in your water, your sewer, and your utility, and by ordinance, we can't waive those. So I just want to make sure you all recognize, yes, you can waive the building permit fee. You don't have to come up with revenue for that, but you will need to come up with revenue, a revenue stream for those system development charges, which are those water and sewer. That can come from a variety of sources, but it's, there is a distinction between what's happening at the code department with review of plans versus what your ordinance say about waiving water and sewer.
See, my preference would be to use both the workforce, so we stay within the definition, and then fill the hole with the ECO Devo jobs money. And I would stretch it so that it handles the building permit fee because I don't like the precedent of waiving those. If you waive it for this, why can't you waive it for any homeowner? You know, the logic that the people are working anyway and we're paying them, just waive it, doesn't make sense to me because we got revenue shortfalls, and we're going to be arguing that here shortly.
But when, I think one of the issues is being able to have the developers accumulate the points that they need in order to have these be viable applications.
Yep.
And have these stronger applications. And I think part of that is a demonstration on the part of the community that we are providing that support.
Yeah, I agree with that fully, and that's why I say it wouldn't be waived, it would be handled just like the utility fund, we'd be taking jobs money and paying for it. So they're going to get everything they ask for. The problem is, you use two sources to be sure the city gets reimbursed for the cost. To me, that's fairly simple, and it's not a, it's not a huge outlay because the jobs portion is 149,000 roughly, and the workforce portion is 162, and it gives them all the points, and all three projects go through, and nothing's going to fall back on city water department users and their water bill, and nothing's going to fall back on the budget issue. It's not going to change it. The revenue streams will stay steady. So I like that as the best approach.
And your workforce number, you're saying, because you're calculating how many of these qualify under our definition?
Right, because I figured, you know, the 25% for one, 70% for the other, and zero for the sunflower. And so it's just basically a matter of a shell game of moving the money, but it stays within the rules. And then the other reason I think that's important to differentiate that is so that if future people come forward and want to use the workforce money, they understand that if it doesn't fit this definition, then it can't get approved. And then, of course, the IRB is not an issue with me, that doesn't hurt us in any way, shape, or form.
Could I provide some information on Sunflower Flats? So I was able to talk with Aaron Estabrock, he's here this evening, and Sunflower Flats and the type of contract they have through HUD, they would be able to go up to 80% AMI. I'll let him speak to how they, how he would propose that you calculate what percentage is workforce and what is not. It likely depends on the individuals that are residing there, so I don't know if we would know that number in advance, but he would be much better, much better to speak to that than I could. So, Mayor, that, we might have to recalculate those figures a little bit, but I was able to confirm right before this that that contract for Sunflower Flats can go up to 80% AMI.
But in either case, if we, you know, we need to move this on tonight because of deadlines, so I'm with John and everybody on that. But if we do it so that we use those funding sources, I think it solves everybody's problem.
Before we...
That's what I recommend.
One additional point, the language in the 2020 question, which took effect in 2023 for job creation, specifically call that recruitment, retention, and creating jobs. If you want to use ECO Devo, you're better off going back to the O2 or 12 tax and looking at those definitions to make this finding, Mayor. That would just be a suggestion of staff, and we can bring you those balances, and you can have that conversation when you have those balances in front of you. But the language in the 2020 tax that just took effect is, it's very narrow on that 20%.
Well, you know, if we take it out of that other one, that's fine.
Okay.
Still money there, if that's not an issue.
Just point of clarification, thank you.
I did get an updated balance from Rebecca right before this on workforce housing sales tax, if that is something that you're interested in knowing how much we have collected. So to date, this started being collected in March of 2023, and so from that point forward, we have $765,000, 700 and, or seven, sorry, $765,000 roughly that we've collected. And that, there is a little bit of a lag there, so it would likely not include March, and it may not include February.
So question for everyone here, I mean, where this, where the system development charge, where all of this comes from isn't necessarily pertinent to what we're voting on tonight, is it? Like, we're not making that decision tonight, we're just deciding?
to do it.
whether or not we're going to do it.
Yeah, I don't think the resolution specifies the location of the funding source.
The motion authorizes the transfer. So you'd have to pass a motion to authorize the transfer whenever city fund to the other city fund.
So you're saying that we do have to decide that tonight?
Well, unless you can have time to table it before their deadline.
Right.
I think April 16th, you would have time. Their deadline's May 10th.
They're looking for a commitment commissioner. They have to score those points, not based on something you'll do in the event they're awarded, but something you're committed to do regardless.
Right, but like
Where are we doing?
where that money comes from
Yeah.
on our end, on that commitment, is not part of the resolution. We're just saying we we have this money somewhere in one of the funds and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and if you leave it in limbo, then it brings up the opportunity for it not to happen in the future.
Okay.
So a majority of the night telling us where to take it from to transfer will allow us to proceed with the assurance they have that it'll happen.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I don't think we should really be in the habit of voting on things without knowing where we're paying for them.
Right.
So Jason, are you saying that the Economic Recovery and Relief Sales Tax Act is not a good one to use for this?
The jobs portion is going to be difficult. Even the 70% under public infrastructure would be difficult too. But the jobs portion is is very narrow. It is written about those three things, creating jobs, retaining them and recruiting them. So it it doesn't fit very well in that definition. Now, you go back to the O2 tax and you go back to the 12 tax, you got more flexibility with how you all wanted to find economic development. And past commissions throughout that two decade period have defined economic development a lot of different ways. They've argued about it. Some have passed resolutions. Other commissions have overruled those resolutions. So it's broader. It gives you more flexibility. And I do believe we have the balance there that we could tap into if that's where you wanted to go.
So that could just be referred to as the economic development tax?
Yeah, either the O2 or the 2012. I think we zeroed one of them out last year when we bought the.
I think 2012.
When we bought the land, both on Amherst and we bought the land out off of Excel. We referenced both of those, Meadow Fab, and I think that the O2 money. The 12 money, there's still money coming in, so I think it's hard for us to have pledged all of that.
I think the so the resolution currently is written does speak specifically to the transfer from the workforce housing as was recommended. But we could amend that tonight. I mean, if you want to modify that language in the resolution, that you can just give us direction to do that. And I would think the 70% money for infrastructure, I mean, could be tapped as well, could it not?
Well, it's public. I don't know if this is considered public. I think that infrastructure that typically a developer has to pay for is private.
It's our meter, though.
Yeah, I don't. I'd have to research that more. I don't know if that's considered.
I wrote some positive, about four or five alternate resolutions that I can put one out there. I would just change it to add the 2012. I had the 23 sales tax, but I don't have a problem with 2012. And the idea is this will specify where the money comes from, but, you know, it will also fund all of this 100%. So it's not going to derail any project.
Yeah, I I think I'd be okay if we if we do kind of the mix you were talking about when just because there are some of the the units in these projects that fit within that definition. But we have, yeah. And so if we can, if we can do the resolution that specifies that we're going to mix between workforce housing and the 2012 economic development based on applicability or eligibility, I think I'd be okay with it.
Okay, I I wrote three options there, which I will make those motions and you can vote it up or down here later after Stephanie finishes with these presentations.
Yes, the only other direction, and we can probably delay this for a future conversation, is just moving forward how you would like staff to approach the Lytech. So part of the discussion that you had here this evening, we can, maybe we can have that in a work session. I'll look to Ron or Jason to provide guidance there. But just so when we when we bring something forward to you, I anticipate this is going to be a yearly request from developers. We have some of these conversations already had and and staff can bring to you what you're what you're expecting.
And in my mind, you know, the IRBs, that's pretty much open. And and then the units, they've got to specify that these are in in the range of workforce housing if they ask for that money. If not, then it's not on the table. But I think that's simple enough.
Okay, would you like to hear from the applicants?
Sure.
We can just maybe go in order as they are on the screen. So Cypress Ridge.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Brett Ballou. I'm president of Schultz Construction near Manhattan. I also live at 721 Ladera Circle. I'm here on behalf of Cypress Ridge, representing Jill Jacoby and Manhattan Area Urban Partnership. Like to, excuse me, thank you for considering our project and considering the incentives that brought before you. I wish Jill was here tonight to to talk about it because she really shines when talking about her tenants and affordable housing. But Excel Development Group, MAP and ourselves, we've partnered on several other projects in Manhattan over the past decade, that being Willow Ridge Apartments, Stone Point Apartments, most recently Canyon Creek Apartments or duplexes, excuse me. All of those were similar projects to this and we were fighting other communities to get those dollars to do that. And so we've demonstrated that we have the ability to develop those properties and do that. Ultimately, we're able to bring back these construction jobs, construction dollars and a future property tax base that wasn't there before because these were all vacant grounds. We couldn't do that without your guys' generosity in waiving permit fees and and tap fees and and things like that. And Stephanie's right, we can't do it tonight without your guys' help. We just won't score possibly, so appreciate the the consideration in that. Couple of things. Mayor, you had talked about the workforce and I think just bigger picture of what we're trying to provide with our development is a quality, smaller home for older demographic that will hopefully come out of maybe existing homes that would be opened up to a younger demographic that can't afford a 3, 4, $500,000 home, but they can't afford maybe a $200,000 home in a more mature neighborhood. So just take that into consideration, please. Also, on the IRB sales tax exemption, that figure is not correct. That and we may have given it to you, but that was what we were calculating as our sales tax amount for the project. So I don't know if that changes all your your formulas.
Which number? Cypress Ridge is a 4.5 million dollar project? How how what's your project total going to be? 10, so yeah. I don't know where four and a half came from, but.
I think we gave it to, but that was our.
Oh, okay.
We figured for sales tax.
Oh, so you took the half already and then take it times nine and a half. Gotcha. Yeah. Very good.
Any questions about our project? Thank you again for listening to us and the consideration.
That detail's not in the resolution, so it won't matter. Okay, thank you. I think that comment there, when I look at the resolution, the the number for the IRB is not in there. So that can be adjusted afterwards. We don't need to trip over that one tonight.
It should be in there because Bond Council put those resolutions together.
Okay, do we have another presentation?
I think Hunter Drive.
Josh Adrian, that's works well. Josh Adrian with the Prime Company. I want to share a little bit about the Hunter Drive Apartments with you tonight. It's been interesting to hear your conversation about this already. So just as an FYI, we're based here in Manhattan, but we do development from the East Coast to the West Coast. But we are very excited to finally be able to do something in Kansas again. We would greatly appreciate to be able to do a project in Manhattan where we live. We haven't done that in over a decade. Those are just a few of our current projects that are in the works. The site that we're looking to do our development on is, it was originally phases three and four of the Scenic Woods Development on Scenic Drive. Those phases were never constructed and the construction ceased after the first two phases in around 2012. And so we started on this project this past summer. And due to the nature of the way that the state low income housing tax credit program works, we're only able to really bite off two buildings at a time for this project. So we are looking at this as a series of phases to get this project done. Phase one would be two buildings, 48 apartments, 32 low income, 16 middle income with a mix of one, twos and threes, meaning trying to meet the highest requirements and the highest scoring ability for the state's Lytech application. The total project is 164 apartments. And this will pretty much replace the Highland Ridge Apartments across the road that have just come out of affordability. And so we have lost that many affordable units here in Manhattan as of this last year. And so this would be a way to, over the next few years, replenish the stock of affordable housing that we have. These are just some basic design styles. It would be a three story garden style complex is what it would be looking like. Our targeted rent rates and household income targets would be from $31,000 to $64,000 a year, if that's helpful information. We talk a lot about AMIs. Sometimes that doesn't do a great job of putting into perspective who the people are and the jobs that they would have to actually be living there. So there's been a lot of talk about the scoring and I thought I would give a brief little rundown for you of how the scoring works. There's a total of 135 points in the 9% Lytech program. What we're talking about here tonight is in that 30 point section. It's called below market loans and support. That makes up 22% of the scoring. And what that really goes to show is that the state of Kansas and KHRC, well, as Stephanie said, they're learning as they go. And that is obvious as they keep changing these regulations every year. And more and more developers are looking at doing affordable housing in the state and they're having to change things and make it better. But what it really shows is that the state really wants the local municipalities to be behind the project. And that's why they put 22% of the scoring based on how invested the city is, the municipality is, in getting the projects done. There's actually three ways of getting those points in there. And so we've only been talking about the the parts in section two, the other support, the fee waiver and the sales tax exemption, which we greatly appreciate you guys being able to support our project with those. There is also the loans and grants aspect, which is another five or 10 points that the city could look at doing. And I would encourage the city to do that. We are currently working on projects in four other municipalities in the state right now. Two of those other municipalities have people dedicated in their city to helping these projects get funded and are making pretty large strides, one of those being Wichita that we've been in conversations with. And they realize that they have not been getting anything selected the past couple of years and are making significant effort to make sure that they score the most points to win. And so there is a level of competition certainly amongst the communities because this is a lot of funds that come in from outside the city and outside the state. There's a good portion of this is federal funds. We feel like our project currently sits at a a great opportunity for some of these loans. And I would be very interested to know the commission if it has any interest in supporting our project in that way as our project is a little bit hamstrung by a ordinance that calls for a road to be built from Scenic Drive up to the top of the hill to connect to Highland Ridge Road. It's a $1.2 million road by our current estimations. And as you can imagine, in a decade of not being built as a market rate complex, that trying to build cheaper apartments there makes it more difficult to develop that road. And so we've been working with city staff and they've been very helpful trying to come up with alternate solutions. But at this point, we we have not found a magic bullet to to get this project to to fill that gap. And this would be a way to at least bridge that gap and also score more points. And so if the staff has, if the commission has any interest in doing something like that, we'd love to know because we are trying desperately to figure out a way to get this gap minimized before we go in with our application on the 10th. I just wanted to show a little bit and to talk about why these other communities are are putting, investing into these things. There is a huge community performer on a project like this that comes in. And so you can see, one of the things that that I really appreciate was from the housing study that we did here a couple of years ago. The highlighted in light blue, those are quotes from the housing study that was in the what we need to do section. And that is support community efforts by using sales tax funds to facilitate workforce housing development. And I know there's been a lot of conversation tonight about what is the definition of workforce housing. That is certainly something that is up for debate. It's not is not a that is not a written in stone thing. That's used different by a lot of different municipalities and different states all have different numbers on that. But the people that would be living in our apartments would all be people that are in the realm of a starting teacher in their first year, a single teacher, a single fireman, married fireman, those kind of things. That is exactly what I think of as workforce housing. And allows for a lot of construction jobs. And I think we are seeing a decrease in construction costs as we are estimating our projects across the country because the significantly high interest rates are really halting construction. And so for us, as a community in Manhattan, when we talk about economic development and recovery and jobs and retaining jobs, giving people steady construction jobs here in Manhattan, those are those are drying up. And we are seeing that from the subcontractors that we are getting bids from. I would take any questions anyone has.
Okay, go ahead, commissioners, if you have questions.
So the Lytech is 10 years, right? Ish.
15, really.
Say again?
15, really.
Okay. And so what what does the rent jump up to at the end of that 15 years?
Well, that's what you could look at Highland Ridge right now. So there's really two options, two ways that an affordable project goes at that 15 year thing. The most common is for it to be recapitalized. It kind of goes through a renewal of the Lytech program. It's rehabilitated and pretty much just redone, funded through the same type of program. It gets another 15 years of extension. That's the most common example of what happens with that. There are times like Highland Ridge where at the end of that 15 years, the the original developer and the owner decided, hey, we're going to market it. We're going to sell it off. A different developer bought it. And they're allowed to just take it back up to market rents. And that's what's happened over there at Highland Ridge. It's not the most common, but that's what's happened there.
Do you plan on holding on to to this one?
We've never sold anything. We still have the duplex that our owners had in college and we rented and we haven't sold it. If anyone's interested in that, I would I would gladly. But we still have it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions? When you talk about the road, is that, and I need to go back and look, something that for this phase you need for the next phase? Or how's that work?
Yeah, thanks, John. I can go. I think I should be smart enough to go back. Yes. So the road, you know, we're talking about here is Hunter Drive that comes up. And what we would really appreciate is the ability to only have to build this lower portion. And then it would ties into the current Hunter Place Drive that goes through Scenic Woods and would have the fire access mandatory. And then work together with the city in the future to figure out some sort of funding mechanism to get the really expensive part of the road built, which is there's there's a creek crossing in here, which is a significant portion of that $1.2 million. And then this is a this is a very steep climb up to the top of this hill. As you can, anybody that's driven on Scenic Drive out there knows that's a your your. out there knows, that's a, you're climbing up there. So, this, yeah, are, these would be the two buildings that we would be building, proposing to build here first, Building Three and Building Five. And so, this road coming up into the neighborhood would not be, would not be necessary for Phase One.
Okay, you, thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any other? Aaron.
Good evening.
Let's see if I can.
That's for Cypress Ridge, okay. So, as Josh did, a great job explaining the application process and the points, so I won't rehash that. But that is really at the phase we're at, and we're seeking to get the approval or get the award. This is our second go at it. We did not receive it last year. And so, part of that realignment of that QAP that Stephanie talked about benefits us. If with this type of resolution, it really does help our application, we did get accepted as a unique application. So, I think that even strengthens the preference for ours statewide. That unique category was granted, if you remember, this project is tied to, and loosely tied, but tied to directly the relocation of those contracts from Garden Grove One and Two with the FEMA grant that the city's been the sponsor of. So, there's timing issues there that we really need a place for those folks to go to live. And this is the place they would go to live once it's built. The AMI on that commissioner, or mayor, was for Sunflower Flats. I was anticipating today, after reviewing that there would be some workforce housing funds used, I wanted to see how many that might be. Those HAP contracts, they go up to that eighty percent AMI. And the average, they actually go down, you know, sometimes ten, twenty percent too. But the average is sixty. So, in my mind, if the average is sixty, there's going to be a good number between sixty and eighty, which is currently the steering committee's definition of workforce housing. So, there'd be a portion of them. I just don't know how many. And it's a good idea. Whoever thought of, I think maybe Stephanie recommended that as a use of funds, it would be appropriate. So, if you have any questions about the project or for me?
Nope, I'm good. I think everybody's in support of it. Good work, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other presentations? That should be the three. Commissioners, do you have any other comments?
Katie, I'm on the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Board. So, should I recuse myself from these, these votes?
At least from the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership vote, yes. You should recuse yourself.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Once again, Gary Olds, thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. There are three proposals before you, which I suppose could be fifteen minutes, but I promise I'm not going to take fifteen minutes. I, I, I must admit that this is, this is deep waters for me, but I'm extremely interested in it. From the standpoint of workforce housing and low-income housing and mixed development housing and senior housing, and of which I am one, and I mean, lots of interest there. And I just, I don't know that I'm going to get some answers here tonight, because I don't know that that's the correct format. But, you know, Josh mentioned earlier that Hunter Ridge went off of the program, which is about a fifteen-year program, roughly, as I understand it. But he referenced that they were low-income. And my understanding of Hunter Ridge was always mixed income. If you lived on the second floor, you played market rent. If you lived on the first floor and qualified, you played lower. So, the whole project wasn't low-income. And I could be mistaken on that, completely mistaken, but, because I'm not speaking from firsthand knowledge. So, these projects that are mixed developments, I think it's important that they be identified clearly to the public and to you all as mixed development. And I think it's also important, and you know this, but I say this for the public's sake, is the projects, and I'll get my names mixed up here in terms of which one is which, but the one that's going to help the Garden Way, National Church, whatever the name of that is, and however many units are in there, which as I understand it, is principally senior housing, if those people are going to go into, is it Sunflower Flats?
Yes.
If they're going to go into Sunflower Flats, wouldn't you want to ask the question, just from a general standpoint, not, not necessarily swaying one way or the other, but do the people who live in that place now work? And if so, how many work? Because if they're seniors and there's only, I don't know, a quarter of them work, then it's reasonable to think that you're going to only have a quarter that works in the new place, or works that lives in the new place, which isn't really here nor there. It's just a question that popped in my mind. And I think it's also important for the public to realize, which is always near and dear to me, the value of the property over at National Church owns is tax-exempt. Sunflower Bank, property tax exempt. So will Sunflower Flats be, is my understanding. Now, I'm not sure about Cypress Ridge, because you made the reference that it was deferred property taxes. So, maybe there's a window of time, ten years, fifteen years, whatever it is, where property taxes are abated or deferred or refated. And then, eventually, they go on the tax rolls. So, for the partnership, my question would be, are the properties that they currently own that you made reference, are they paying property taxes? Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. Now, I realize that's not necessarily the topic here. You're just trying to support. But I raise those questions because, as you know, and I've said many times, if we continue down this road where we have currently forty-three percent of valuations of all valuation for the whole county as tax-exempt, you know, maybe when my oldest daughter is, youngest daughter is my age, it'll be fifty percent. I mean, we got to be careful there. We're trying to grow. I understand what you're saying. We're trying to grow housing. We need housing. But, you know, and we need apartment housing. Also, keep in mind that it's my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, is I don't see any reason that a student couldn't qualify for any of this housing under the right circumstances. Because my understanding is, the reason we're the poorest county in the state is because of students, because their income is so incredibly low. So, they could live in Hunter or where else, which I don't know that that's good or bad. I'm just pointing it out as a consideration with regards to that. Because, I mean, I'll tell you what, if I'm a student and my folks are Johnson County, and I'm coming here and Hunter Ridge's over there, and it's, I don't know what it was, three bedrooms for fourteen-hundred a month, I can find two folks to live with me over there. And am I working? Eh, I might be working, which I suppose is workforce housing. But I think those are things to consider. I'm not objecting to the projects. Don't, don't get me wrong. I'm just raising questions of, let's make sure we have all the facts and know if there's any unintended consequences that could come about because of this. The three projects aren't going to be funded. It sounds like Sunflower Flats may have the most probability of being funded, because it's a second town around. It's unique. And it is dealing with true, what I would consider true, as I understand it, low-income housing, which is also senior housing in this case. Is that understood? Four seconds, that's pretty good.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, commissioners. Jason Smith, President, CEO, Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. First of all, I want to thank the three developers in this process for their willingness to step forward and invest in our community and invest in housing. It's incredibly important, as you all know. I want to commend the staff for their hard work on this, Stephanie, Jason, Ron, and all the other folks who worked on that, and for you all for considering this. We are not here to weigh in on, on this particular item. In fact, I wasn't even sure I was going to speak tonight until something else had come up. And I want, I want to make sure that, that we weigh in on this issue again of the jobs fund as part of the economic recovery sales tax. And we sold that to the voters. And what the ballot language said was that it was jobs, for jobs, jobs initiatives, jobs projects. And, and we believe, our members believe, we have a statement that I believe you all received about two months ago that our board passed unanimously, that those funds should be reserved for jobs. Again, we are, we are pro-housing. We think housing of all sizes is important. I appreciate Jason for pointing out the ballot language. We think that's important. Appreciate you all considering what the ballot language was on the workforce housing initiative, because I think language matters and words matter. And it's important that, that the taxpayers know that what they passed is what will come to pass. And especially if we're going to consider moving something forward in the near future, I think having credibility from previous sales tax ballots and initiatives is incredibly important. So, once again, we are not weighing in on this particular item. We don't have a statement on whether these, this should be funded, what fund it should come out of. Only that, we have a statement that jobs funds should be preserved for jobs initiatives. And we don't believe that this meets that requirement. So, happy to answer any questions. And thank you all again.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
My name's Zach Burton. I'm with Fortress here in Manhattan. And I wanted to stand up tonight and voice my support for these three projects. I think they're fantastic. I love to see all of these people put the time and effort into creating housing opportunities here in town. And we're really in favor of that with our company. The one thing I'd like to bring up tonight just pertains only to the workforce housing sales tax credit dollars that are being spent for this project. And we currently have submitted an item to the commission for, for those funds or for, for a project of ours to be, to be reviewed or to be looked at for the use of those funds. And we currently, as Stephanie said, have seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars sitting there in the fund to use for that. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things with these. My only objection to these projects is just the use of the workforce housing funds for them. I guess, and I've been educated tonight, which is why I wanted to come here, a portion of these will be, will be qualifying within the sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI. So, if there be, in one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI, I am a hundred percent in favor of using that. With other, in talking to staff, there's been questions that have been raised regarding that. How are we going to monitor that? So, if we're going to go ahead and award these workforce housing funds tonight, the questions I've talked to you guys as commissioners about as well is, how are we going to monitor whether we stay within sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI? What things do we have in place to do that? And I think those are questions before we just give the funds out of that fund that was specifically tailored for workforce housing. It's not just do we hit the sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI figure. It's how do we monitor whether or not it's being used for that. And I don't know if we have those things in place yet. I would ask you guys to consider that as a question as well. The other thing is, the Workforce Housing Commission went through, is that we had, we had different things that were, do we want to do infill? Are we in favor of greenfield? And as we consider this, and as we start to set a precedent by using these workforce housing fund dollars for these things, I'd like to note, note that two of these projects are greenfield projects, two of them on the west side of town. And as we talk about things being used for low-income housing or workforce housing, those are things that, those are things that we've talked about just internally and also with you as commissioners. So, as we, as we start, I guess if we're going to tap into this fund tonight, we start to set some precedence that west side of town's good, greenfield's okay, and that there's not needing to be any kind of monitoring for the use of those funds. One alternative I would suggest as an alternative would be to go down the road with some of these other funds that are applicable and wait until we have a policy in place for workforce housing. Or, if we're going to use those funds, start to consider other requests that have come through as well, so that we can continue to use that seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars to help people out. The other thing that's also interesting is, is that on our, on our table up here, we have twenty-nine million. And with Brett's revision, we're up to almost thirty-five million. If you incentivize development, okay, the people will come. We've got a lot of smart people in this room. And when we put dollars at work, and when we actually start using those dollars to fund projects, people will come do those projects. And we're sitting here with thirty-five million dollars' worth of incentives that we're offering tonight for under sixty percent AMI. We have a ton of programs in place for that. And I just want to highlight this again, because as we did our work session about three months ago, we're left in this same spot. We have a missing middle where we don't have any programs. And the workforce housing dollars, we're supposed to fund that missing middle to fund the sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI, that we don't have any programs for at all. Tonight, you can see what, what it does. It really helps when we have programs available and we don't have them in that middle range. And so, incentivizing development within that range is really what I think the workforce housing dollars are for. And I just, if we're going to do that tonight, I hope that we continue to do that, because we really need the, we really need to hit that gap in town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Tyler Dakin. I live at ten-twenty Highland Ridge. So, it's Hunter Drive Apartments is a big deal to me. I just know, I have a comment more than anything. From living there for nine years now, whenever we get rain or water, it all backs up right to the place where, where they're looking to develop and all that stuff. So, I think that if, if you take all those trees out and enter a lot of cement and all that kind of stuff, that there's no place for the water to go. And we're talking about low-income housing. So, that's going to be a big deal of repairs and things like that. If we're not, if we're, the money's got to go somewhere, right? So, it's going to cost to move all those trees and build up the land and all that kind of stuff. And then, like, like this guy said, behind me that, you know, the lower-income stuff is going to be able to lower the apartments of the bottom, the bottom floors and all that stuff, they're going to be, they're, they're not going to get as much love and attention, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, I, that's just, I wanted to make that comment. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the issue. Thank you.
Tyler?
Thank you.
In case there are any other public comment?
I wonder, Chris, could you explain how, how MAPS housing is monitored by the state? I mean, that we can't just arbitrarily charge whatever we want. Be nice.
Sure. Chris Bailey. I live at two-seventeen Starlight Lane. And I'm the chairman of the board of the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership.
I think it's president for life.
Perhaps. And that also makes me president of all of our limited partnerships for all the projects we've done here in Manhattan in the past. With respect to Manhattan Area Housing Partnership, like OICOS, we are a community housing development organization. And the, at least in our case, the projects we develop stay with us, and they remain qualified throughout the lifetime of, of the buildings themselves. I mean, they will remain affordable housing on the same terms as low-income housing tax credits require as, as long as we own them. And we have never yet sold anything that we own or that we've acquired. And that is sort of where the community housing development organizations are different from other tax credit developers. You can use tax credits to develop a property, keep it low-income for the compliance period required by the tax credits, which is, I believe, always fifteen years. And then, after that's up, you can turn around and raise the rents to whatever the market will bear, or sell it to somebody else who will do likewise. And so, I mean, from our standpoint, we are monitored while we operate, while we're in our compliance period, both by the KHRC, who are providing the tax credits, and by, in our case, the Midwest Housing Equity Group, which are the syndicators for the tax credits that we, that we obtain. So, we have powerful oversight on, on our rents and how, how those monies are utilized. I mean, not just through construction, but for fifteen, fifteen years after construction. construction. Some of that backs off after the 10-year payback period of the tax credits, but we are still required to maintain those standards. And, and in our case, it is not our business model to then turn around and do something else. We're a Kansas nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(3). We, we would jeopardize our, our status if we were to raise our rents to market rate. So I hope that responds to your question, Commissioner.
Chris, does the, does the city have any oversight for that as well? Do they do any monitoring?
Not as such. I mean, they're doing their inspections along with the, the bank inspections and, and KHRC's inspections as things are built. But afterwards, no, we don't report to the city. I mean, we're 501(c)(3), so our stuff is open to inspection. If they asked questions, we would definitely respond. But no, that's not, the city doesn't work on compliance beyond just the normal code type stuff.
Okay, thank you. Aaron, I presume that, I presume the housing authority also would be reporting to HUD or to other agencies in terms of maintaining your affordable housing status?
Yeah, as, as Chris mentioned, the, so the tax credits are really a tool from IRS. So it's a, there's reporting that goes to the state, the KHRC, but there are mechanisms to hold those tax credits into the 60 or 40% levels. And it's, there, there's a lot of regulation when it comes to speak of that. I think that's not, without lacking on any of your, anybody's part, wouldn't want to recreate the wheel, I would say that would be doing if you're trying to monitor that. It's already being monitored by a couple of federal agencies, including HUD in some degree.
And Josh, could you just speak to your project as well?
As you can imagine, the state giving you money and the federal government giving you money to, to have rents at a certain rate, and you not doing that would get you in a lot of trouble. So they're, they're thoroughly checking your rates, and the penalties are pretty substantial. So there's, there's not really any way to wiggle out of those.
Okay, one, one question, Jason, just to, to follow up. So we allocate workforce money. Do we have a plan for monitoring it? Or is that something we need to build?
Are you talking in reference to Zach's comment? Yeah, that's the policy that we're drafting at this point in time. Should have back before you in the next couple of months in terms of looking at IRBs, looking at the workforce housing dollars, looking at RHIDs. It's all comprehensive within the policy itself. So if the commission desires to track or somehow require a developer in the beginning stages to verify or validate something, that's one thing. I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago. It's the financial incentive that you're providing based on performance that then develops the relationship for a long-term type of relationship itself. So if you're going to wait and give that money out based on performance, then yeah, you're going to be monitoring what they're doing, which is how we've structured a lot of our economic development deals. But those terms will be driven by the five of you and what policy you'd like to establish.
Okay, I guess the question is, we, we allocate this money tonight, is it possible to put that in place after these grants are approved?
Oh yeah, this money tonight, if you want to use workforce housing, you know you're, you're not incentivizing anything that's going to have rents over a certain point. And they're all going to fall within the 60 to, 60 to 120 or below, quite frankly. It could even be below that. You're not going to exceed it.
Okay. All right. So I've, I've got some, I marked up some resolutions here, a little bit different than what's, what's in our schedule. But just to, to clarify, what, what, what these three resolutions I'll read will do is number one, it will use a, a mix of funds to 100% fund all of these. And it will use the workforce ones only against those that, that meet our definition. It will use the 2012 Economic Development Fund to plug the holes for the others. So it doesn't run afoul of the discussion on jobs. So we, we're clear, we're clear on that. And it will 100% take care of all three of these projects and not do any harm anywhere the way, the way I see it. So, so I guess there's three projects. So what I'll do is just start with Sunflower Flats and work on down, and we can decide what we want to do. So I move that we approve resolution, this is on Sunflower Flats, approve resolution number 040224B determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and authorizing a sales tax exemption for the OCAUS Development Corporation Sunflower Flats project, and approve resolution number 040224-C granting city incentives, $31,580 building permit fee, $24,264 water connection fee, and $24,264 sewer connection fee in support of the project from the 2012 Economic Development Sales Tax.
I need to clarify a couple of things. So those incentives are granted through the resolution, the second resolution. And the way that you worded it, just so we understand the resolution right now, it actually waives the building permit fee, which I understand, Mayor, you're not doing that section one. So we would have to amend the resolution that it's not a waiver of the building per fee, permit fee, and that instead it's, it's from authorizing a transfer of funds, as the mayor described. So I just want to be sure that we understand what we're doing with the motion is amending the draft resolution.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the intent.
Yes.
So, so is that okay, the wording of it then?
Yes. It's, I just wanted to clarify for the commission that the waiver, it's, it's not a waiver anymore, and we'll change the resolution to reflect that we do transfer the funds for the building permit.
Okay, so that's the first motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I mean, I'm not as hung up as you about not doing the waiver and using the funds, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, then the next one is Cypress Ridge, and you got to put the one amendment that you gave me, I'll, I'll read that in here. So this is approved resolution number 040224D determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and authorizing a sales tax exemption for the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Cypress Ridge Project with an amendment that changes the principal amount not to exceed $10 million. And approve resolution number 040224E granting city incentives, $32,310 building permit fees, $54,271 water connection fee, and $54,271 sewer connection fee in support of the project using $108,543 from the Workforce Housing Fund and $46,391 from the 2012 Economic Development Sales Tax.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please, please call the roll.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
I have to abstain.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, and then the, the third one, which is the Hunter Drive Project, approve resolution number 040224F determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and authorizing a sales tax exemption for the Prime Company's Hunter Drive Apartments Project, and approve resolution number 040224G granting city incentives, $28,688 building permit fee, $24,264 water connection fee, and $24,264 sewer connection fee in support of the project, using $54,051 from the Workforce Housing Fund and $23,165 from the 2012 Economic Development Sales Tax.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and that brings us to, you know, item D, which is amendment to the agreement with IPS Group Incorporated to add license plate recognition equipment and software for the Third Street parking garage and discuss changes to registration and fees in city-owned parking garages effective August 1st, 2024.
Hi, Adrian Tucker, Parking Services Manager at the City of Manhattan. Real quick, we're going to do a quick background of our department. May 2022, we approved the contract with IPS for LPR technology and pay stations in Aggieville. January 2023, parking rates went into effect in the Aggieville garage. October of 2023, we had the initial downtown garage discussion about charging in the garage, costs, estimates, et cetera. February 2024, we met to talk about the downtown garage LPR and fees. Tonight, April 2024, the goal is to approve the contract amendment with IPS for LPR and discuss Aggieville and downtown garage fees. May 2024, the goal is to approve ordinance amendment and fee resolution. And August 21st, 2024 is the goal to initiate new parking rates to go into effect for the downtown garage in Aggieville if other changes are pursued. Currently, license plate recognition is required for each visit in the Aggieville garage, registering either on the ParkMobile app or at a pay station. Our current rates of the first two hours are free. Sunday through Wednesday, after the first two hours, it's $2 per hour, up to a maximum of $10. Thursday through Saturday, it's $2 per hour after the first two free hours with a maximum of eight, which is our safe driver rate. In February 2023, we had a work discussion discussing, discussing adopting similar rates for downtown. I think this should have been 24? Yeah. We'd adopting this pay structure specifically for the downtown garage. Currently in Aggieville, we offer monthly permits. Part-time employees are only $10 a month. Full-time employees, $40 a month. We have university or faculty, staff, students for $40 a month. And we have reserved parking Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, for $100 a month, or 24/7 reserved parking for $200 a month. The ABA came to us with a request noting that with the construction of Midtown starting soon, that they're going to be losing approximately 100 parking spaces on street beginning this summer. A part of their request, which you were given, quote, "From now until the completion of construction in 2028, we ask that all employees of the district be allowed to register their license plates and be granted free parking in the garage Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. Outside of those days and times, the employees could buy part-time or full-time monthly passes at the new lower rates," specifically referring to the part-time employee permit that I dropped from 25 to 10. Considerations, if we go this route, we will lose some current employee permit revenue of about, we estimate about $6, $7,000 a month. You need vehicles to register at the pay station or the app to enforce this new parking plan. ParkMobile charges a 35 cent transaction fee for every time you use ParkMobile, which we currently cover. If you're looking at 100 to 125 employees Monday through Friday, you're looking at an additional cost of $12,000 to $16,000 a year. We could use a permit system, but employees would need the foresight to register slash pay if they come in early or stay past 5 p.m. If we made people get a free permit to come into the garage, they would have to renew that monthly, and I can't imagine wanting to make an employee do that until 2028.
What do they do now? I mean, do they have a tag or something that they?
It's done all through license plate.
Okay.
Yeah.
But?
But they, they, they log into the IPS system, like their, the permit portal. They order the permit online. They enter in their license plate, and as soon as the permit's paid for, the system recognizes that license plate is having that permit. So when they come in the garage and the LPR scans their plate, it automatically detects that it has a permit, and they can park where they want in the garage.
Okay, but if they, with, with this, what Aggieville is asking for, we would have to pay 35 cents per transaction?
If they use ParkMobile. They have the option of using the pay station, which there's no transaction fee for. It's just, ParkMobile is convenient. So say if an employee comes in and they're from 8 to 5, but they have to stay late for some reason.
Right.
And they're there until 6 or 7. Instead of incurring a citation, they can just go back on ParkMobile and pay for those two hours if they need it. And so it's, it's definitely more convenient for the employees to go this way than making them every single month register for a, a permit.
And that's 12 to 16 a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Both Dennis and Belinda are here, and they're going to advocate for the free Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 in the garage. If we do that, we do request, though, that we re- remove the two-hour free parking on evenings and weekends and move to 25 cents for the first 15 minutes, 50 cents for the first 30 minutes, a dollar for the first hour, and then $2 hour after that with a $10 daily max. That will at least cover the ParkMobile transaction fee. And what we have found is that the people that are parking in the garage for two hours or less are actually doing it for less than an hour. And they're usually grabbing a quick bite to eat. They're picking up their lunch, or they're picking up something from, from Aggieville and they're leaving. So this is a great way to cover that expense for evenings and weekends when we see the most transient traffic. A lot of, a good seven, almost 70, 75% of our hourly parkers are evenings and weekends. So this will help us cut, recoup some of that expense. I'd like to say that this specifically, these rates are for an Aggieville construction impact program for them. This is why we are doing this. And the city's in support of this. I'm in support of this. Dennis and Belinda will probably talk and say that they're in, of course, are in support of this as well. But I just wanted to make sure that these rate changes for the Aggieville garage, it's because of the construction impact. And we'll go until construction is over, and then we'll be revisiting this in, you know, another three years, three, four years to talk about how to do Aggieville moving forward. As far as the downtown garage is concerned, again, two different user groups, two different rates, going back to what we discussed in February, making sure, having the first two hours free, following registration, two hours after with a daily max of up to 10, again, with that conference rate of $5 per vehicle for the conference. Kind of, real quick, I just want to, I just want to note that the quote that I got from IPS for the equipment, the pay stations, the ongoing, ongoing user fees, that quote is almost a year old. When I first brought it to the commission in October, I had, we had been sitting on it for about four or five months until we were able to bring it forward. We discussed it in February. We're discussing it again. If we kick the can down the road and I come back with an IPS amended contract, it's going to be more expensive because their costs go up. And so it only makes sense that our costs would go up as well. So I just want that to kind of be in the back of people's minds. Again, what we're acting, asking for right now is approve an amendment in the amount of $63,414.39 in a one-time expense and $3,224 in additional annual expenses to the contract with IPS Group, increasing the total contract amount to $154,562 in one-time expenses with IPS and $43,368 in annual recurring software fees. I'd like to note that to be able to run two garages off of LPR for less than $100,000 is, it's a good deal. That's, that's very low for our industry with all the technology involved and all of the integrations. And we ask that you provide feedback on changing to the registration and fees in the city-owned parking garages to begin August 1st, 2024. Again, the reason we're charging for parking downtown is to make the garage safe, secure, and clean. I got photos from just this week alone of a concrete support structure. One of the pillars at the downtown garage on the third floor, I have a three-foot section of concrete falling off that is going to need to be repaired, that I don't think that our department can repair because I think it's a deep crack that goes down to the rebar. So I have to have that professionally done. And that just happened this week. In addition to all the other repairs that the garage needs, this is, again, this is not something that we can kick the can down the road on. We've been doing it for over a decade, and it's time to, to get this done.
Adrian, thank you for your presentation. I think we, I would wholly support the change in rates for the Aggieville garage. I just did some quick math, cutting the difference between your estimates of what it would cost per year, and it's about fifty-six thousand dollars, which I think, relative to the size of those two projects that are about to get started, it's reasonable for us to support that. I, I keep going back to these, is the builder of the downtown garage liable for any of this? I mean, is there a presumption of structural integrity that lasts longer than ten years for a building?
If there had been continuous and ongoing maintenance that had been done regularly on the garage, then, and this was happening, I would say definitely yes, but there has been no maintenance done on that garage in, since it was built. There's been no power washing, no cleaning, and those, those are the things that deteriorate a garage, is the, is not cleaning it. And so a lot of what we're seeing, I mean, outside of the limestone that's crumbling off the, I think that's the material that, the limestone that's just kind of slapped up on the side of the garage. I mean, outside of that, things like what I'm seeing today with the pillars crumbling, that's just lack of maintenance.
Is it still structurally sound?
It is.
Okay.
It is. When we had Walker consultants come and take a thorough evaluation of the garage and then had McCall and Gordon come behind and, and just kind of verify all the findings, it is structurally sound. It's safe to park in there, but with things, when you have literal limestone and concrete falling off, you still are in the risk of hitting somebody or damaging property.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I imagine we would absolutely be liable for that if that were to happen.
Yes. Anything else?
No, I think, you know, taking a lot of the street parking away in Aggieville, we are gonna have more people using the garage. I mean, I've, anytime I've been down there to use it, aside from like the trick-or-treat in Aggieville, it was pretty, it was pretty packed then, but if I go down there, you know, in the afternoon or something like that, it's, I can, I can go right in and find parking on the first level, it's not hard. But I think that this is a good kind of compromise, that the folks that won't be able to find street parking, they will be using that more often, and that'll incur us fees, so, so at least collecting that transaction fee makes a lot of sense to me. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a goodwill kind of gesture to, to the, the employees that are down in Aggieville...
Absolutely.
...that are also gonna lose a lot of parking, too, so...
Plus, I think it will also, could potentially inculcate the ethic of using the garage. You know, if this is something you need to do for the next three years or four years, you know, you become familiar with it, it's, you know, it's not a novel process every time you go in, if you only go in once every four months or so, but if you're going in on a more regular basis. So it might make the transition to continued higher use of the garage as well as the, the new one to be built a little bit, you know, that might make that process a little easier.
Yeah, you realize you spend less time putting in the app than you do driving around the block three times to find a parking spot.
Yeah, it's, it's the app you registered, that's the, the, most time you'll ever spend on the app is initially registering. After that, it's, you open the app, you hit three buttons, you're good to go.
I have one question on the, if we do the, we do the daytime free parking, do they have to use Park Mobile for that?
They don't have to, but they do have to register, so they can go to a pay station and register their vehicle there as well.
Okay, so the free parking, you still have to...
Yeah, you'll still have to register.
...punch into the system where you might get a ticket?
Yeah.
And then you say that if, if I do that and wanna park free during the day and I enter it in the system, I'm gonna get charged that fee?
No, we're still paying that fee. The City of Manhattan is. We're still paying the transaction fee.
That's what I mean, when I say we.
Oh, okay.
The city would be paying that fee, so that's a, that's a sort of a detriment to it.
That, that's why we're recommending that we remove the two hours free on evenings and weekends, because if you don't do that, we're gonna lose revenue annually to continue to maintain the garage, so that's the balance there. We understand we're gonna have to eat additional transaction fees Monday through Friday, but...
Yeah, but that's like, what, thirty-four cents?
Thirty-four cents, yeah.
Well, and we could, of course, just say you gotta pay the thirty-four cents. I don't know if anybody's thought about that. I don't, you know, because if, if I gotta punch it in my phone anyway, yeah, I don't know if that's a viable option or not, it's just, just something I thought about.
We talked about it internally, but we've heard you over the years express, you know, we targeted and marketed this as a free use, and thirty-four cents isn't free, so, but, but it could be. The reason we also want you to register Monday through Friday, eight to five, once five o'clock hits, if you have that Park Mobile app and you're in the garage, you're gonna get a notice. That's the real benefit of having them register. If we don't have them register, now staff is in a really tough spot at five oh one or five oh five or five fifteen with when did you arrive?
Yeah.
And, and just knowing who's in the garage and who's not, so the registration will help. If you go to the pay station, you're gonna register your vehicle, it's gonna tell you at that point in time, at five P.M., your session will end.
Yeah, and it's, it, we, they'd be impossible to enforce if we don't have them register.
Good, that's a logical explanation, I'm, I'm convinced. Appreciate that.
Now, I do have a question about that. Will the employees have to go in and like say, yes, add time, or does that, 'cause I'm just thinking, a server who is, you know, I know it's not super busy at a lot of restaurants at, at five o'clock yet, but somebody's in the middle of a shift, usually they're gonna show up at, you know, before the dinner rush and then work through that. They may get busy and, and not go in and, and, you know, click that extra button. Can they just start getting charged the time automatically, or do they have to actually go in and do something like that?
They actually have to go in and select the time, how much time they want...
Okay.
...on the app. The Park Mobile won't do it automatically.
Those individuals can qualify for a ten dollar a month permit and...
Right.
...park in the garage any day, any time because they're a part-time employee, so those individuals who are working, you know, say you're working a three to eight P.M. shift, five times a, a month even...
Yeah.
...you're, you're better off just to get yourself a very cheap permit.
Okay, and then the permit will still work the same?
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and, and we encourage all part-time people to get that ten dollar a month permit because their shifts vary so much, and they can use that permit for their shifts regardless. It doesn't matter evenings, weekends, during the day.
So the, the free parking is really just for the patrons that we're talking about?
Well, and the employees that work Monday through Friday.
Right, right, okay. That makes sense, all right.
Okay, I think it's a good plan. It addresses the construction turmoil that will proceed here shortly, again, for a couple of years, and, and I think in the long term, it's, it's the right thing to do.
Agreed.
Any other Commissioner comments? Okay, do we have any public comment on this particular item?
I guess this would be a three-peat, right? Gary Olds, thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle, just a question in terms of the technology, doesn't really impact what you're discussing here today, but since they're license plate readers, and I don't know how they work technically, but does law enforcement have access to those license plate readers in real time or whatever real time means, such that if you forgot to pay a parking ticket, or you had an outstanding warrant, or whatever the case may be, how, how does that work with RCPD? Because as I understand it, RCPD is in the process of, whatever, license plate readers potentially through the city, which may be a completely different technology, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm just concerned of the access to information by law enforcement with regards to the presence of a person in the parking garage, if that's the right way to ask the question. And you don't really need to answer that if it has nothing to do with what you're talking about, it's just, we'll raise it later.
Currently, RCPD does not have access to our LPR system, and they do not have access to our database of license plates. What we have, the information that we collect is the license plate and the GPS coordinates of where that license plate was located. I also, I do not have access to DMV information, so I have no idea who these vehicles belong to or who they're registered to. The citations are uploaded and sent to municipal court. Municipal court then connects, they have access to DMV records so that they can attach a name to the violation. People pay their violations through the court, and the court's the one that issues warrants if citations go unpaid for a long period of time. I'm not sure how RCPD acts, would access that information from the court, but it would have to, it would have to go to the court, not to us.
But someday, that potential technologically could exist. That's, that's the possibility down the road, I mean, maybe several years down the road. And I had one other question, but that was a senior moment, so I've forgotten it.
So Adrian, just to follow up on that, but if RCPD requested information from you because they were investigating something...
Absolutely.
You'd be able to provide them that?
I would be able to, yes. I, I'd be able to provide them with where the license plate was picked up in our system and the GPS coordinates of that and how long that, how long that vehicle was there.
Yeah, but that's what my understanding was, and, and from the law board, you know, RCPD is gonna get license plate readers, but they're not connected to the garage or the city at all. They're, they're gonna be on the periphery, and it, it's designed to, you know, track some criminal activity, so that's, that's a whole different monster.
And will there be cameras, as there are in Aggieville, as I understand, there are in Aggieville parking garage in the downtown?
Yes.
Is that part of this?
Uh, yes, it's, are you talking about the LPR cameras or the security cameras?
Security cameras.
Yeah, the security cameras have already been installed and they're already operational.
I don't use the garage, so sorry.
Okay, thank you. So as far as feedback, do you have everything you need from us, or do we need to further discuss the changes?
I think there's...
Yes, there's still some more public comment? I appreciate that, I...
Sure.
If I'd have brought a pen, I'd sign in. I'll, I'll do that here in a minute.
I could, I could toss in one.
What are you, what are you doing with the pen? I, I left my pen sitting there. Good evening, Dennis Cook with the Aggieville Business Association. Yeah, we do have a request before you that, that we've been talking about. As we were getting into this, you know, this next wave of redevelopment, which actually starts two weeks from yesterday, on the fifteenth, they're gonna get into the, into the alleys, you know, really behind, you know, behind my business, from Nico's up to the old Abachi Hut, the eleven hundred block, yeah, between Moro and Laramie. And, and we know that we're gonna, you know, uh, once they get in there, we're gonna lose the ability to park back there. There's businesses that park back there, there's actually some, some tenants that park back there, but then, you know, and we know that's about a ninety-day project, and then we'll move up to the, then we'll go west a block and, and work over there, and we're gonna displace a bunch of people over there. And so that's how this conversation got started again, is about what can we do, and the idea was, is maybe instead of making a decision today and then making a decision ninety days from now, and then making another decision as we go through all the alleys and all that stuff, that this was kind of the, the comprehensive look. And, you know, and we recognize, you know, that, that the, the garage is, is a great addition for us, and it does need to be paid for, and, but I, I think this also lends some encouragement for people to get in there. We're gonna put more people in there. You know, I know that, I've talked to a couple of people about this, that this is a possibility for them, and they thought, okay, well, I'm not sure whether I am an eight to five, you know, sometimes I'm an eight to six, or I'm a seven to five, or whatever, or then they'll probably, what they'll do is go in and spend the ten bucks or whatever to, to get a monthly pass, and which will probably help cover the thirty-four, thirty-five cents, whatever that, whatever that fee is, as, as every time they read that. But I think this will kind of calm the waters for everybody. We're gonna put a lot more people in the garage, the garage will get some use, and it's gonna make it easier for everybody, so if, if you would, if you would consider this, it would be a, a great gesture towards the hard-working people in Aggieville because we're really getting ready to, you know, we've been through it a little bit, and some of that felt like it was a lot. We're getting ready to go through a lot now. You know, like, you know, we know that as soon as Back Nine does get started sometime late this summer, you know, overnight, we'll lose at least a hundred spots. It's probably, it's, it's actually a few more than that, and, you know, and those are just street locations that people could park on, and we know that we need to work with those people, you know, to find them an alternative, and so this is the way to go. I would appreciate you guys taking a look at this and, and helping us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other further public comment on this topic?
Actually, I did come up with a question. From a practical, you say you have to register if you go into the garage. From a practical standpoint, anything happen to someone if they don't register and they don't use it outside of eight to five?
We would treat it just like we would now where the first offense is a warning. Educating them.
So you're, so you're still gonna monitor the, the garage?
We, we are, yes. It, it would be a warning, and, and it, it's, I don't wanna say that, that we're not going to enforce the eight to five Monday through Friday, but we're not going to be, yes, yes.
'Cause you have to have someone do that, right?
Correct. I, I current, it, it would be the responsibility of one of my current day officers to go through and, and check the garage, and we would be looking more for not just non-registered violations, but, you know, improper parking, making sure you're not parking in the handicap stalls, making sure you're not being a nuisance, those kinds of things. But if we were to cite somebody for not registering, it would be a warning citation, that, it's that educational piece that we have now, to let people know like, hey, you need to register, or, and keep track of people who are extending over past the, the five P.M. and offering like, hey, we have a permit, you know, take advantage of our permit system. We, we don't wanna be punitive towards employees for trying to do the right thing. We would rather educate.
Okay, yeah, my main question was whether you're gonna be monitored or not.
We are.
'Cause, 'cause obviously if we're monitored, you could say, well, I'm coming for lunch, I know I'm not gonna be here past five, type of thing, so, okay, thanks.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, if not, we'll close public comment, and then I'll get back to my question, which, do you have everything you need from the commission?
I believe we do.
Yep, and Commissioner, regarding the fee resolution, we are, since now we kind of have two separate fee approaches for Aggieville and downtown, we'll come back with an Aggieville fee resolution here, actually, probably the April sixteenth meeting, that way we can get this in place when the alley construction happens here in the next couple of weeks. And then, as that timeline said, we'll come back with some ordinance changes in the downtown fee resolution, since we have some time here in the next couple of meetings.
Okay, so everyone's in agreement with the presentation, so we're good. Okay, then we've got one item to vote on, and that's the agreement on the IPS Group, so I'll go ahead and root, read that. We approve amendment number one to the agreement with IPS Group Incorporated of San Diego, California in the amount of sixty-three thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-nine cents in one-time expenses and three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars in additional annual expenses, increasing the total contract amount to a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars in one-time expenses with IPS and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars in annual recurring software fees, including cloud storage, enforcement data, analytics, and customer support.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Adencheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and that concludes all the items on the agenda. Can we take a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the April second, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the City Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Abcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you for participating tonight. The City Commission meeting is hereby adjourned.